Please, I need a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to certify closed session that the only items that we discussed in closed session was those items that were in the enabling motion and those items that are in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivors?
Yes.
Ms. Coran?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
You do an honors awards recognition. Dr. State, yes, okay. Next item on our agenda is honors awards and recognition. This is where the board takes an opportunity to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of our student athletes and others within the districts. And at this time, I'm going to turn the DIAS podium over to Dr. State.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask Dr. Graham to come forward, please.
As Mr. Jones said, this is the time when we take a moment to honor some of our students. And I would like Jennifer Weaver, our Director of Secondary Education, to come forth and present the first group.
Good evening. As you can see, we have a room full of talented athletes for you tonight. We always use this meeting to recognize all of our successful spring sport athletes. So I'd like to begin this evening with Christiansburg High School. And here to represent them is Coach Shawn Bossman.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank the board and everybody for letting us join us tonight to be recognized for our accomplishment in outdoor 3A boys state title last year that we achieved. First, I'd like to have the members of my team that joined me today. Mackenzie Muldoon, Aaron Kridlin, Mitchell Walters, Kendall Smith, Darius Smith, Jordan Norman, Aaron Lowe, join me, please. Unfortunately, we don't have everybody here as some of our graduates have moved on to college at CNU in Bluefield and a tech college in Florida. Dr. Sears is here. We're just very thankful to have this opportunity to get recognized. I know these few individuals here, plus the rest of my team, worked hard and able to achieve something. Crispror High School hasn't done in history, get an outdoor state title to add on to our indoor state title that we achieved last year and was a wonderful year for me, being first year, taking over a program that Coach Quinn, unfortunately, it's his birthday today, unable our A.D. to make it today. But we're just happy to be here and the few, Mackenzie Muldoon, he was our two-time state champ in the fall, win state title in the long jump and the 110 hurdles. Aaron Kridlin was top three in the pole vault, Mitchell and Darius Smith and Jordan Norman part of our relay four-by-one. Kendall Smith was part of our four-by-four and four-by-eight all-state team. And Aaron Lowe was part of our all-state four-by-eight team. And Tanner Reed and Jordan Finn also with us. Jordan Finn was our only other state champion in the shot put. And we're just happy to be here and thank you guys for the recognition. Thank you.
Coach, I think it should be pointed out that your team had a great point average. Do you know what it was?
I do not remember.
I think it was about a 2.7, no, 2.5, somewhere close to that range, wasn't it, Kevin?
It was about a 3.2.
Oh, I'm sorry, 3.2, I'm sorry, 3.2. Yes, a 3.2 grade point average.
Yeah. Say that. They wouldn't miss that.
So one, one.
2.5 would have been.
I got that information from Kevin. I turned it around. The point is, they, and I want to correct Ms. Weaver, they're student athletes because they did have a 3.2, and I think that's wonderful.
Yes. Thank you for that.
Next, I'd like to take a minute to introduce our new athletic director at Blacksburg High School, Mr. Peter Lyles, here this evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having us out tonight in recognition of three of our spring sports programs that have reached the pinnacle of success. Although I was not here last spring, it is truly an athletic director's dream to be part of these types of programs. These kids obviously worked hard with the VHSL having over 350 member schools and only six in those particular divisions reaching this pinnacle. We have much to be celebrating tonight and a lot of joy. I want to introduce, starting with our soccer program, Coach Travis Eshenman could not be with us tonight, but I have a representative from his team along with some teammates, Jane Everett, the cap, junior captain Jane Everett, she's now a senior. Jane?
I was the junior captain this past season. This season was truly a definitely special season for us because we faced a lot of conflict and adversity with injuries. We had four of our important starters sidelined for most of the season because of those injuries. And, but that made our team come together and work harder and all of the younger players especially worked really hard to move up and help with our success. We achieved the conference 32 title and the 3A West Region Championship. And in regular season play, we scored 72 goals opposed to four goals from other teams. And in postseason, we scored 21 goals to three. So we scored a total of 93 goals and which was the highest a team has ever done in program history. But really, the true, the truly special thing about our team this year was that we finally won the state title. And after, like, in program history, it was since 1995 when it was first established. In 2014, this was the first time that the girls had ever gotten the title. And it was really, truly great being a part of such a great team with really hard-working teammates. And it's a great year, but thank you again for the school board for letting us talk.
Next, I have the distinct pleasure of introducing our tennis coach, Magdalena Kinska.
Hey, I would like to thank you all for your support. It's been a really long time since boys tennis team had any accomplishments like that. We won singles title, state championship, first time since 20 years. And the guy that did it was Thomas Ducker. And we also won a doubles championship, and that didn't happen in about 10, maybe 15 years. And that was his partner, Ryan Wells. I would just like to thank for your support and the opportunity to work with the kids and in their name, just having a chance to be part of school sport. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, on our end, representing our girls track team, and this is not his first rodeo, Coach James DiMarco. He fulfilled the triple crown by capturing the state title in track. So Coach DiMarco.
Thank you, members of the board, for having us here tonight. It's always an honor to recognize our student athletes. They had a tremendous season. Our girls team won the cross-country state championship, the indoor state championship, and the outdoor track and field championships, which is the triple crown. It's a really rare feat to pull off. And through their diligence in the classroom and finding that extra time to put the work in outside the classroom and in the weight room, on the trails and on the track, they succeeded in their goals. We have tonight just two of our young ladies with us. Can we bring up Jennifer Fleming and Stephanie Gardner?
Stephanie is only a freshman. She'll be, now she's a sophomore, sorry for Stephanie. And she was an all-state hurdler for us, broke 48 seconds in the hurdle, running 47.98, ran her best time of the season at the state championships to earn all-state honors. And then beside her was our fastest miler on the team. She ran a 4.57 miler. She'll be a senior this year and is being heavily recruited by lots and lots of universities and seven, a great leader for our team. And these two ladies will help our new group of young kids that came out, and hopefully we can continue the tradition of winning some more championship titles. I would like to also give a big thanks to Brandon Bear, who's one of my assistant coaches that's here tonight. Steve Schmidt, Kathleen Poole, and Mark Henson could not be here tonight. And also Mr. Jack Kinky, coaches that also helped make our program run indoor track. We have about 120 kids and outdoor track about 100. So it's a true team effort, and I would be amiss if I didn't recognize them because it's not my coaching, it's the team of coaches coming together and getting this done with wonderful, absolutely wonderful athletes, parents, and in our administration. To be a part of the success Blacksburg High School had last year, to win the Wachovia Cup again, to see the girls soccer team win their first one, and the tennis team, to be in the new building together, that energy was so refreshing to see that we had lost over the last few years. So we thank everybody in the community for making it happen and for bringing all the kids together under one roof. And it was just an amazing, amazing experience to have that again. Thank you so much.
And last but not least, we have Paul Dominey, the athletic director from Auburn High School.
I need to begin by saying what a pleasure it is to be standing up here in front of you again, and I hope to make this a regular event for Auburn. After winning four state championships in the first 100 years or so, Auburn athletes won two state championships last year, and we have our eyes on more. The second of those championships is why I'm here tonight, to present to you the Auburn Boys Track Team. When the season began and even through the regional championships, few people thought that this Auburn team had a chance to win a state title with this particular group of young men. Even the week before the state championship, an opponent we shall not name from a city abutting Montgomery County publicly pronounced in the newspaper they're rivals for the state title. Auburn was not on that list. This team, however, had a different idea. It was observed during the celebration dinner after the state championship that while other teams were composed of outstanding looking athletes, everyone on our team, quote, "is either 100 pounds or 300 pounds." And that was kind of funny because as you can tell looking around, it's kind of true. But what other schools and coaches missed was that each of these athletes here had been honed for their specialty, and they were all very, very good. Track and field is an individual sport, but it's scored as a team contest. And the final team score showed Auburn the champion by a 75 to 73 tally over Alta Vista and 54 other schools. It was the next to the slimmest of margins, and afterwards, it was noted that there were contributions that we could not have done without. The 4x800 team of Jared Downing, and guys, if you could just each step forward a wave so that the school board knows who you are. Trevor Dominey, Caleb Hallinan, and Andrew Frazier started the meet with a warning shot to the other schools, placing second in their relay after being seeded seventh. Obviously, the performances of state champion Michael Hinckley in the shot put, who cannot be here tonight because he's playing college football, and Austin Crockett in the pole vault were critical. Caleb Hallinan and his sore knees placed fourth in the 800 to gain three more points than expected. We won by two. Jared Downing ran both the 1600 and the 3200 to pick up 12 points. The pole vaulters, Trevor Dominey, Ethan Crockett, and his brother Austin, collected 23 points for the team. Gavin Hoag placed fourth in the discus on a broken foot for five points. And Josh Fleener, who had placed fourth in the shot put, performed surprisingly well in the discus to place seventh, picking up two points. Did I mention we won the meet by two points? You may have, you may have noticed that I haven't mentioned the sprinters yet. Justin Kraft, Justin Light, Jordan Fleener, and Austin Crockett ran a flawless 4x100 that placed seventh in the state for, yes, you guessed it, two points. So the young men that I present to you tonight are a group of individuals who combined their specific abilities to become the greatest of all boys track teams in 1A in Virginia last spring. Each one standing here was absolutely essential to the success of the team, and that is why they stand here to be honored tonight. This is your Auburn Eagles Boys Track Team.
At this time, the board will take a five-minute recess so that they may personally congratulate all the students that we recognize tonight.
And this is where the board sets aside 30 minutes to allow citizens to address this board on items of educational interest. Part of the process is as you come to the DIAS, we'd ask for you to state your name and address. You have three minutes to speak, and we do have on the screens over here, we do have a clock that monitors the time, and we ask that you respect that. We have three people signed up this evening, and they go in order as they've signed up. The first person is Pamela Flinch. I hope I said your last name correctly.
Hello, I'm Hannah Murdis, and I'm a sophomore at Blacksburg High School, and my address is 3002 Tall Oaks Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia 24060.
And I'm Pamela Flinch. I'm a junior at Blacksburg High School, and my address is 402 Seminole Drive. We are members of an organization called Y Street. Y Street is a program of the Virginia Foundation of Health, for Healthy Youth, and is Virginia's largest youth-led movement. We promote healthier Virginia. This is both Hannah and my second year as Y Street members.
Did you know one-fourth of our Virginia youth are overweight or obese? So next time you walk into a classroom in Montgomery County, imagine one of the four students there are overweight. Even though the Centers for Disease Control recommends 150 minutes of physical education per week of K through five students, less than 10% of schools in Virginia actually follow this recommendation.
We at Y Street are attempting to make Virginia healthier by requesting that schools offer 30 minutes of physical education a day through the ACT Out campaign. P.E. not only promotes healthier lifestyles for students, but also improves students' academic performances and test scores. I know as a county, we are on a strict budget, but implementing these programs does not have to be expensive. The average P.E. budget for schools is only $764 a year.
Additionally, the ACT Out campaign collected 15,847 surveys and found that 94% of Virginia supports this cause. Also, 97% of teachers support requiring at least 2.5 hours of P.E. per week in grades K through eight.
We support ACT Out because we believe every child should have the opportunity to participate in physical education. In our own Montgomery County, 1,571 residents support, have filled out support cards, and 28 residents have filled out photo pledges supporting daily P.E. And our school principal, Brian Kitz, supports ACT Out too.
We look forward to the opportunity to discuss this with you further. We would appreciate working together with you to bring daily physical education to our school division. Thank you so much for your time. We are willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Usually during public address, the board does not respond, but as part of the process, under new business, the board may request additional information. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next person signed up is Zach Adelman.
Can I hand these out to the board?
Sure. Just hand it to one and then let him pass it around. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Zach Adelman. My address is 504 Monte Vista Drive in Blacksburg. I live in the Margaret Beeks district. My daughters are not yet school age, and so my questions or my information I'd like to address the board about concerns kindergarten enrollment. The first page I handed out is found as a printout of your website on enrollment, and it states, and I'll just read one sentence, "Students with birthdays on October 1st or after must wait until the following school year." And of course, that ignores a lot of developmental psychology and child psychology about when children are ready for kindergarten. And my wife and I started looking around for, is it possible to admit students that have a birthday after that, shortly after that, anytime like that? And so we met with the principal at Margaret Beeks, we talked to Lois Graham, the assistant superintendent, and we met with Karen on the school board, and then we did a lot of research outside, looking at policies of other counties about who has, who allows exceptions. And it turns out, many of the neighboring counties do allow exceptions. And so this was very strange, the sentence that we see that Montgomery does not, and we've heard this from a lot of other teachers, from our daycare, from other parents that, and talking with Lois Graham, that the board basically does not, or the school district does not ever allow this, and there are never any exceptions, and there's no leeway here. And it was very confusing to me. So I came here, my original intent to address the board was to ask the board to potentially draft a policy that would allow exceptions based on any criteria that they may seem fit. But as I started navigating the website, I came across an actual policy for admission. This is the second page. And if we, and this is a policy that was last revised in September 2013 by the board, and on the backside, under admissions, number four, persons that are not required to be admitted may be admitted if they're determined that such space is available, and they may be admitted if they will not impair the usefulness and efficiency of the school, and they may be charged tuition. And so now I became very confused because on one hand, the public face of the website is saying, "We can never do it," but the actual school board policy says, "Of course you can do it, and here's how." And so I'm asking the board to clarify how a parent goes about fulfilling what is in the policy and how the school administration, who is responsible for making a determination that space is available and a determination that the student will not impair the usefulness and efficiency, essentially creating a pathway, because it's strange that this policy has been enforced since 2004, and no one in the administration, school district, the principals, the school board has ever used it, and no parent has ever used it. And so I'm just here to bring this to the attention of the school board. Hopefully, we can shed a little light on this and figure out how we can make this a little bit more public and fix the website so that the website actually reflects school board policy rather than whatever this is, I'm sure. So, thank you.
Thank you. That is, concludes all the people have signed up for public address. At this time, I'll open it up to the audience, and if there's anyone in the audience that would like to address this board, please step forward and state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Andrea Berdke, and my address is 3160 Lady Slipper Lane in Blacksburg. And I came here to make an inquiry, but having heard now that the board does not actually respond when someone speaks, I'd just like to draw your attention to the policy by which when students miss the first day of school, they are automatically dismissed completely and dropped from the roster across the board and all scheduling all classes that they have been registered for. Even though they have been registered, they have been paid for, everything is taken care of. So I'm kind of curious why it is that students are automatically removed from the rosters entirely when they miss that first day of school. I can't seem to find any information on the website or any of the handbooks for the school, the state, or the district on this policy. So I'm curious where this policy comes from, and if it's at all possible for the school board to put something on their website about this policy, that would be very helpful.
Could you give me your name again, please?
Andrea Berdke.
Spell the last.
B-E-R-T-K-E.
And your address?
3160 Lady Slipper Lane, Blacksburg.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? If so, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, public address is now closed. Next item on the agenda is the consent items. Does anybody have anything they would like to pull under consent and discuss?
Mr. Jones, I'd like to bring to your attention that we added field trips. While you guys were in closed session, we realized that we had started that process but didn't actually do the final button push to put it in the agenda for you.
Okay. And that is item C under consent?
Correct.
And it looks like there is four items under consent for field trips. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I don't have that.
I don't either.
You may need to hit refresh on your browser.
Where's that at?
I've got it.
I got it for you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions on their items that are consent? Hearing none, all those items are approved under consent. Next item on the agenda is the personnel report, and before you have a personnel report, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the personnel report? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The issue that I've been opposing has been addressed with this personnel report, so therefore I'm approving.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the financial reports. I need a motion to pay the bills.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify abstaining, and we have to do individual motions on those. All those in favor signify abstaining, aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining, voting on this issue because of my involvement with CrossPoint Conference Center and the Four Square Church, and I want to be in line and in tune with, in accordance to the Virginia state law that requires me to make such a abstain, I guess, abstaining.
Abstention. Abstention, that's the word I was looking for.
Next item is item B, the financial summary report. I need a motion to approve that as well.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the financial summary report? All those in favor signify abstaining, aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. State.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good evening again, board members, and we have several items to present tonight. The first item is the school crisis plan, which will be presented for your action tonight. Dr. Lois Graham, Assistant Superintendent- Dr. Lois Graham, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, will present information for your consideration and action.
As you know, the crisis plans have been made available for you, and I know several board members did come to review those, so should you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. But otherwise, all schools have submitted their crisis plans, and we're ready to approve them for the schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on the crisis plan?
Yes, I did have a couple of questions. I actually did go in and take a look. Sorry, I was, I'd forgotten I needed to pull out my notes for that. There were a couple of things I noticed in some of the, some of the plans that were present, and some plans were not present in other plans, and I just wanted to make a recommendation that maybe we consider putting them in all of them. I did see the overall checklist of everything that needs to be put in there, but I did notice that there, in the CHS provision for if there's a bomb threat, there's actually a checklist of procedures to go through, and I thought it was excellent. I thought we probably need to implement that with the rest of the schools. I did like the Auburn Elementary School actually had an evaluation of how they handled each crisis. I think that was a great thing to probably implement as well. And this may be in a separate situation, a separate place, but it seemed like some of them made reference to incident reports, but not every school did as well. We just maybe something that we want to make sure is in each one of those. And then, the last question I have really was, I noticed that each crisis plan, or each, for each school, is required to have a student roster. And my question is, is how often does that need to be updated, and number two, how often does it get updated?
They update it at the first of the year. We don't require the appendix, that piece is in the appendix until the two weeks after the beginning of school.
Exactly, I saw that.
And then, it is up to the school to update it. We usually around January will put out something to make sure that they have updated it.
All right, very good. And my understanding was, I think I spoke with Ms. Shanks, and she said that typically anyway, if there is a crisis, we actually rely upon Power School for the current roster, so I don't know if we need to make a note of that somewhere in the crisis plan in and of itself, but I did, that actually does make the most sense. But overall, I was very pleased. It seemed like everything was very well thought out. I liked the way it was organized. It was easy for me to find everything that I needed, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have one comment also. It seems to me that there should be some more continuity amongst the different schools. I found good continuity amongst the elementary schools. The high, an example, an intruder comes into the building. It seemed to me that all the elementary schools handled it relatively the same way, which means that if I'm a teacher in this building and I get transferred to that building, no problem. I don't need to review all this stuff. The high schools not so, so much. Intruder, example, intruder coming into a building, one of the high schools had quite a different approach to it than the other three. Just probably a little more continuity in there, so that people, and even police officers, when they get used to one process in one building, they should be able to go to the other buildings, have the same type of process, just that.
We can certainly address that at our principals' meetings.
I did mention it to Ms. Blackburn, but I don't know if she had an opportunity to talk to anyone about it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? We have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify abstaining, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Jones, before I move to the second item for discussion or second presentation, I just noticed that Ms. Diggs is in the audience tonight, and I failed to make comment on her by your actions in the personnel, by approving the personnel report. Ms. Diggs has been promoted to supervisor for student services, so I just wanted to make certain that we publicly acknowledge the fact that that has taken place.
Congratulate.
Did we approve that?
Yes, we did.
Congratulations, Ms. Diggs. Okay, the second item is the Certified Employee Evaluation Handbook. This is presented for your action again, also tonight. Joe McElantra will come forward to provide you with an update.
Thank you, Dr. Staden. There have been no changes since the last I presented it to you. Again, I think the biggest change in the handbook itself is that upper range where we made it a little bit more in line with the state and with other counties that have implemented this similar plan.
I have a question that I'm, maybe I would be able to answer while looking at this more deeply, but I understand that the teachers are graded heavily in the scoring range with their scores on SOLs. What about teachers that don't teach students that are taking an SOL, like, for example, a guidance counselor or a music teacher?
Yes, ma'am. They all have to get with their administrator and discuss the student growth performance, how they're going to be measured for that year. They're not always based on SOLs, because again, as you pointed out, there are some grades and some subjects that aren't connected with an SOL test.
Okay. And what happens to an employee if they get a proficient score for several years in a row? What's the process?
Nothing. They get a proficient. Proficient is, is a, what we, I know it's not a term we like to think of as a great or a great teacher or a great employee, but in this case, it's a good employee who's doing a good job, meeting the expectations. And if you look through there, there's some pretty high expectations throughout that manual in each of those performance areas. So, to get proficient is not a bad thing. It's actually a really good thing. To get exceeds, now that's something where you step above everybody else. You're the model teacher, and you could be pointed to for this particular area. The only time a teacher comes into subject is if they fall below that in several areas, and then we look at a possibility of looking at performance improvement plans or those kinds of things. But again, there is a stipulation in there, it says "may," so just because they score below on one doesn't mean they're going to be placed on a plan of improvement.
Any other questions, board members?
I guess everybody gets a copy of this, of both of these handbooks? I mean, the employees that are impacted have a copy of this and are aware that this is what they're being evaluated?
Yes, sir. Everybody's fully aware of those. And the only, again, the biggest changes that you see there is the top rating, is not the, the other ones basically stayed the same. There was very little change in those.
This is brought to us for action. I apologize, board members, so at this point, I'd like to request a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and now we're in discussion. My apologies.
Any further discussion?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify abstaining, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now have a certified handbook.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is, the third item has been brought to you for, to give you some public feedback on the first day of school. So, we want to start off by letting you know that the first day went smoothly with minor exceptions. All positions were staffed and onboard for the first day of school. On day one, bus routes went relatively smoothly, and every child was home by 5:00 p.m. Our secondary schools dealt with the customary schedule change requests and schedule conflict issues, and most of those conflicts were resolved by Thursday afternoon. The superintendent commended our maintenance crews at the school level and district level on the great condition of our facilities. Ms. Blackburn visited nine schools the first week, and she reported that each one was in top condition. The leadership team and our curriculum supervisors also visited many of our schools this year and provided support as needed, especially on the first day. I personally visited 10 schools last week, and I also have the same response that Ms. Blackburn had. They were looking very well. So, we are ready to start this year and have a great year with a continued focus on engagement with our students and families. So, that's our report on the first day. The next item.
I want to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
If I may. I went to bus stops in my neighborhood in the morning to see the little kids go off. Many of them were first-year kids, and I went back in the afternoon to see how their first day went. And I want you to take this back to your teachers and principals. I've never seen so many happy kids, and this is the first year that I just saw. Everybody was happy. They were excited, they were happy, they loved their school, they enjoyed their teachers, and across the board, this is what I saw. And I think that's commendable, and I hope you would take that back to your folks and let them know that at least in my district, the bus stops I visited, everybody was really excited and pleased, and the kids were beside themselves, and continue to be today.
Thank you, sir. Item four, math coaches. Jonathan Schultz, the supervisor for math, will provide a brief overview of instructional coaching and secondary mathematics.
Good evening, board members. Just as a quick background, last year, you received information on what our instructional coaching model looks like at the elementary level. Tonight is a chance to update you and give you some background on what, how things work at the secondary level, which focuses on mathematics. In general, our, everything that we do, you've seen the picture many times, so everything we're trying to do is guided by our instructional model, and trying to put the best practices in our classrooms, help our teachers deliver the best instructions, so our students are the most successful that they can be. Our recently adopted six-year plan has a, you know, some great pieces in it in terms of our goals for student achievement, but also in terms of the level of instruction that we want to have in our divisions, that we are delivering the highest quality instruction that we can. So, we want our teachers using best practices and 21st century tools, and we, in order for us to do that, we've got to help them. It's a lot of work to change and to grow as the profession changes and the demands that teachers face now, in terms of time and just all the layers of, you know, additional work that come with teaching now. And trying to put that system into place, one of the key ways that we're working to do that in the county is through our coaching model. So, just as a quick reminder, at the elementary level, we have five instructional coaches supporting our schools, and they work with supporting teachers in both reading and math. At the secondary level, we have six supporting mathematics. The primary responsibilities of the coaches are basically to help teachers get through the day and make things, just make it possible to do their job the best that they can. They work with teachers in co-planning and co-teaching lessons, modeling lessons. They help teachers with assessment of student learning, analyzing data, especially from benchmarks and SOL tests, and helping teachers stay on top of students who may be struggling for any reason and just trying to monitor, help them monitor student progress. They also, when we work to have a division-level initiative to try to get everybody moving in the same direction, all the instruction moving in the same direction across the county, the coaches play a big role in that. Their primary job is to work with teachers, and they are professional developers. They're on the spot, ongoing, you know, professional development, support people for teachers. So, with that said, tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing a team of folks from Christiansburg High School who are going to share their experiences about working together last year in that coaching situation. So, we have Dr. Kevin Sears, the principal. We have Ernestine Seville, who's our math coach at Christiansburg High School, and Amy Price, who's a mathematics teacher at Christiansburg High School.
Good evening, Dr. Staden and members of the board. First, I would like to thank you for approving that math coaches be employed at the high school level. I think the position contributed greatly to the growth we saw last year in math scores on SOL tests, and more importantly, the number of students who were passing math classes. I don't know how familiar you are with the data at Christiansburg, but we had a very large ninth-grade bubble. About 25% of our ninth graders were being retained every year. Math and English were the two biggest reasons that those retentions were happening, and last year, we had a 94% promotion rate with our ninth graders, and the math coach played a large part in that. And as for CHS, Ms. Seville Brock, she was invaluable in a number of ways. First, she worked with our teachers to implement strategies that were taught through the professional development program. She helped them take these strategies and plan lessons that incorporated the strategies that increased student engagement and created classrooms where learning was more active and there was less stand and deliver going on. She helped teachers sort through and make useful meaning of the feedback and suggestions that were given during the team observations. And if you're not familiar with that process, last year, we had data sweeps going on where teams went through the school and observed every teacher in the building. Then, we also did team observations where two or more people would go in and observe a specific teacher and provide written feedback. And Ms. Seville Brock, the math coach, was able to take that with each math teacher and say, "Okay, this is what they meant, you know, this really fits well with your style, this suggestion, so let's take it and run with it, and I'll help you plan it, and I'll help you pull the resources to make that happen." What, from my perspective, one of the most beneficial parts of having the math coach at the high school level was that she was able to coordinate the math remediation programs for students who still needed a verified credit in math to graduate. And keep in mind, those are students who may have taken the math class two or three years ago but failed the SOL. She worked with teachers to get them out of non-SOL classes or after school or before school, during lunch, whenever they could be remediated. Ms. Seville Brock set that schedule up and got them in and got them the extra help, and more than doubled the percentage of students last year who were passing the retakes. And I'm very proud to say that every single senior we had last year who still needed a math SOL eventually passed that math SOL, and that was not a barrier that kept them from graduating, and a large part of that was because of the work that was completed by the math coach. She also coordinated the expedited retakes, the remediation for the expedited retakes, and those are students who don't pass the test but score a 375 or higher, and if we can get them to pass it before the end of the year, then their first score, the failing score, does not count against us with the state accountability standards. And we more than doubled our rate of students who were passing the expedited retakes as well last year, and that, in math, was a very large part because of the work that was done by the math coach. She served as a liaison between the central office administrators, the school-based administrators, and the math teachers, and she was able to facilitate better communication, because sometimes we don't always know what the other group is talking about. They'll send something out, and we're so busy when we read the email or get the message, we say, "Okay," and we try to run with it. But having her in place, she was able to look at it more in more detail and get back with us and say, "Okay, let's try this, let's go this route to see if we can be successful with our students." And finally, she was able to report specific progress that each teacher had made throughout the year, things that we may not have seen just going in the classroom to do the observation. She was more in touch with the student progress. You know, yes, he only got a 64, but at the midterm of the first nine weeks, he was at a 32, and we were able to see that much growth in him in that amount of time. So, she just gave us a lot of valuable information. It was an incredible resource to have, and I truly believe that Montgomery County saw more growth than probably any other county in the area last year with secondary math, and the biggest reason why was because we had the foresight to hire math coaches and put them in the high school, in the high schools, and as a result, we just saw some tremendous growth across the board. Thank you.
My name is Ernestine Seville, and I am the math coach at Christiansburg High School. Thank you for the opportunity for me to come and to present to you some exciting things that happened at CHS. I would like to talk just a little bit about one of the programs and a team of teachers that I supported last year. Working with Dr. Schultz, the administrators at Christiansburg Middle, Christiansburg High School, and the coach at Christiansburg Middle, we were able to identify approximately 64 students that were going to need targeted intervention prior to students that were gonna need targeted intervention prior to taking Algebra I. We collected data points on each one of these students. We looked at previous grades, we looked at benchmark tests, we looked at SOL scores. Out of those sixty-plus students, we noticed that only three of them had passed the eighth grade math SOL. So we planned instruction based upon their needs, their gaps in the math content and in their math skills. We tracked their progress. We tracked their progress in intervention programs such as Math 180 and Reflex Math. Reflex Math is a computational fluency program that's all online. We tracked their progress in the SMI, which is the Scholastic Math Inventory, and also in Common Assessments. We created a data wall, and in the PowerPoint, you can see just a snippet of our data wall. Each index card represented a student, one of those sixty-four students. We charted their progress. We wanted to know, how well are you doing in Math 180? Was able to look at their progress in these programs and then highlight the teachers, those classroom teachers. Oh, by the way, s- this student might need some more time on Reflex, or this student may need some one-on-one in Math 180 to get to the next module. But we were also able to look at those data cards and celebrate some success when we had students that, for the first time, had eighty percent mastery of their multiplication facts. We were able to celebrate that by looking at our data wall and identifying those students. The team of teachers, along with myself, were able to tailor that instruction to meet the needs of our students. Every day, every student received direct instruction, small group instruction, and online instruction. I tried to support the teachers by sharing with them best practices in mathematics, sharing with them engagement strategies, engagement activities, so they could do what they do best, which is teach. With a focus on the data, we determined that some of these students were gonna be ready for Algebra I by mid-year. So as you can see on this next slide, seventy-six percent of those seven, sixty-plus students were ready for Algebra I by second semester. Through co-planning, targeted instruction, research-based interventions, and common assessments, our students were better prepared to perform in Algebra I and on the SOL. Of these students placed in Algebra I mid-year, eighty-eight percent of them scored proficient on the Algebra I SOL. Remember, these are the same students that only three of them scored proficient in eighth grade math SOL. We collected data. We used the data to inform the instruction. We created common assessments, we analyzed the results, and we saw student success. Not only academic success, but we saw students, for the first time, feeling confident about mathematics. Having someone in the building that they had, had a relationship with, within, with that teacher, they knew they had someone they could go to. So, not only academic success, but self-confidence, good attitudes about mathematics, and we had students, for the first time, realizing they could do mathematics and they could be successful. Now I'd like to introduce to you one of our outstanding math teachers at Christiansburg High School that I have a privilege, that I am privileged to work with. When you see the data on these, uh, circle graphs, one thing it's not showing, she was one of the teachers that worked with these students, but one thing that's not showing here that I want you to know, one hundred percent of her students that are represented in these circles scored proficient on the Algebra I SOL. Here's Amy Price.
Um, first off, thank you for letting me have this time tonight. My name is Amy Price. I am a math teacher at Christiansburg High School. I am currently in my fifteenth year of teaching at Christiansburg High School. I actually did my student teaching and things all in Montgomery County, so I've seen lots of changes throughout the years with Montgomery County. Um, a couple of years ago, Jonathan Schultz contacted me to let me know that we were at Christiansburg High School, we were getting a part-time, um, math coach. And having that part-time person did make some differences in our building. We were able to accomplish some things that we had never been able to accomplish before in those years. However, a part-time person just really and truly was not enough. So, the following year, which was this past year, Jonathan contacted me again and said that Ernestine Seville Brock was going to be joining us as a full-time math coach. I was pretty excited, but, you know, a little hesitant, because I was like, okay, is this just another change? Is it gonna last? What's gonna happen? Um, I was very pleased when Ernestine came in. She immediately tried to develop relationships with both teachers, students, administrators, all the way across the board. Um, showed that she was really wanting to do better, wanting to make a difference. Um, as a teacher, I found myself not having a lot of time. Um, I have a planning block, but I don't have time still to get everything accomplished. Uh, she, along with her administrative team and our guidance staff, was able to go down to the middle school and work with those guidance counselors, those teachers, to look at data and say, these kids need to be in this class, and then they were placed correctly. So that was the first major change for me, was when I walked in the first day of class, I knew that the kids were in the right classroom, which makes a tremendous difference. Then the second thing that was really important to me was, in the past, I may not have a planning block with anyone who could really help me. You know, if I was stuck on how to come across a topic, and, you know, I'd tried everything I knew, and I was like, okay, now what do I do? The kids still aren't getting it. There oftentimes was not anyone to compare notes with. So, we wound up having co-planning. Um, I had teachers that also taught the same subject as I did, at the same time as I did, and it was oftentimes, most of the time, Ernestine Seville was right there along with us to say, hey, here's another option, have you thought about this? Try this. You know, that helps tremendously, because then we can go back into the classroom and have a different aspect on it, that you wouldn't imagine the difference. Uh, with the part-time person, the first year, that person might be there during my planning block, they might not be. So, you know, full-time is really a key there. Um, along with that, in the classroom, Ernestine and I would go in together some days. Some days, Ernestine would go in, and I'd come in a few minutes later, or, you know, other way is around. But Ernestine was there to support those kids. Um, she could come in, the kids often had, you know, they knew who she was, they knew they could trust in her, as they did their classroom teacher. My average class is about twenty to twenty-five. Often, you know, students who have not been successful, they're not the most motivated. One person with twenty-five students, fifteen of them being students who have never been successful before, you can't do it by yourself some days. Um, Ernestine came in, she would just randomly show up, and she would be there to help those students. Oftentimes, these are the students who can't stay after school. I can't pull them from, you know, another class, because during my planning block, they have English. So they felt more successful with those type of things. She helped me track data. You know, that's a big piece, is knowing what a student knows, what they don't know, and where to go from there. So, as she was showing you the wall, that wall was in our math office, and we would look at it together and say, this is what a kid knows, this is what a kid doesn't know, and this is where we need to go from there, and how can I help you, and what can we do to fix this? As she was saying, I had one student who had passed the Math 80 SOL in my class, one out of twelve. That was a small class, granted, but one out of twelve had passed, and I had a hundred percent pass rate. Those kids were ecstatic. You know, they had the feeling of, I have been successful for the first time ever in math, and now those kids, I see them in the hallway, and they're, they're in geometry now, and they're very proud of themselves, and they're telling their teacher, I can do this, I've done it in the past. Whereas I've passed many students, many students have passed my class, and they did not pass the SOL. So they went on to geometry, but the likelihood of them being successful there is slim, because they don't have the confidence. So I ask you to just keep this, these things in mind. Um, we, we have come a long way. If you look at the percentages, as Dr. Sears said, we have come a long way. Christiansburg High School has made tremendous strides. However, we still have a little ways to go. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
In summary, I just wanted to remind you, um, Jonathan and I about this time last year were before you, telling you, um, a long list of math enhancements and resources that we were gonna try to provide to teachers, that you all were gracious enough to include in the budget. Um, and I think we were all a little nervous about how that would play out. Sometimes it's really difficult to take things from resources and professional development to actually making change in the classroom. Um, and I'm very proud, the team before you represents all the teams at the high school. This exact model is what happened in each of our high schools. Between the teachers and the coach and the administrator and central office, we really were a team, um, to put all of our resources together to meet the needs of our students. Um, and so I just wanted to remind you that, um, in a few weeks, we'll be sharing with you an update on all of those pieces, um, but the instructional coaches really were a vital part of that. Um, they really were, I, I think probably had one of the most difficult jobs, um, because as Dr. Sears mentioned, Ernestine had to translate what she was hearing from Jonathan, from Kevin, from the teachers, and make sure that all of us were hearing what was going well and what needed improvement at all of those levels. Um, and she really was the linchpin and the other instructional coaches to make sure that all of us were operating on the same page, we were being responsive to teachers' needs, um, to make sure that we could be successful to meet the needs of our students. Um, so again, so proud of this team and, and all the other teams that they represent, and would just like to thank you again for investing, um, in the math enhancements, and especially the math coaches. We really appreciate it and saw some wonderful results for our students.
Board members, you have questions?
Could we find out where the other five are located for the secondary, um, schools?
They're at, um, Eastern Montgomery High School, Shawsville Middle, Christiansburg Middle, Auburn High School, and Auburn Middle.
Okay.
Just like to comment, I remember the presentation from last year, and, uh, especially, you know, I've been really keen on that relationship piece, and it sounds like this is exactly what has happened, and I'm ready to go home tonight, 'cause I'm happy, you know? So, uh, uh, thank you all for the hard work, and just appreciate your dedication to these students. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
And did Ms. Price say you had twelve people in your algebra class?
Yeah, one of my algebra classes, yes.
That's quite a nice ratio.
I have a couple of questions, um, on the slides, if I could, please. The, wanting to roll the coach. Those three bullets there, what percentage do you, they spend in each one? If you were to assign a percentage?
You wanna answer that?
Anybody have an idea?
I would say a large percentage, um, would be in the co-planning. It's okay.
But I do have questions.
Being my first year at Christiansburg High School, I would say that the large percentage of it was with co-planning. Um, we had some division-wide, uh, professional development, especially with engagement strategies, how to get students engaged in the mathematics, not just sitting in the class being compliant. So a lot of the, uh, percentage of the time was in co-planning with them. Um, we did have to look at, uh, assessment, the benchmark scores, pulling all of that data out, looking at what is it our students need to be successful? Um, and then supporting those initiatives and the interventions. On any given week, you know, it may be thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three percent, and on another week, it may be, um, the first one, almost one hundred percent. It really depends upon the needs of the teachers.
Okay.
When you say co-planning, are you including co-teaching?
Yes, on some, with it, yes. Uh, we, we'll do a model of where there's some co-teaching. There will be times when, um, I will plan with the teacher, and then they'll want me just to come into the classroom and observe, to give them feedback. Sometimes, they will want me, okay, you take this part, or, and I'll take this part of it, or you work with this group, I'll work with that group. Um, we've even had one teacher that wasn't real s- she felt that she wasn't real strong in one area of the mathematics that was new to her, and so I went in and modeled the instruction for that. So, yeah, co-teaching is just that, in the classroom with the teachers, and they're teaching, I'm teaching, sometimes I'm teaching, they're observing, they're teaching, I'm observing.
The, the, um, second slide, which is the pie?
Yes.
No, the second slide in the post-presentation.
The instructional model?
Yeah.
Right there.
Yes.
If you look, that one of the pieces of pie is engagement, and personally, I think that engagement should be overlapping everything, but studies are showing that co-teaching and engagement is becoming incredibly successful. Is that the combination you're using, um, or are you one teacher teaching, the other observing? How, how, tell me about how engagement fits into this.
It, it, it would be kind of a blending of both. The engagement is, you want, you want the students engaged with the mathematics, you want the students doing the mathematics. So, in that model of co-planning and co-teaching with those individual student, uh, individual teachers, it depends upon the teacher sometimes. Sometimes, there will be a new strategy that a teacher wants to use, that is one that's considered best practices in mathematics under that engagement strategy. So, they just need an extra pair of hands, because maybe students are going to different stations, and so you may have five different stations, and you have students rotating among those five stations. And so, having another adult, another teacher, a math teacher in that room can help facilitate the students-
Engaging, yeah, sure.
-going through those stations and getting what they need, the important piece, out of that station.
Thank you.
A question about, uh, as the students in front of technology, how often are they in front of a computer doing Math 180 or the different things per week?
In the model that we used last year, um, our students in the Math 180 algebra readiness that went into Algebra I, they were on a computer every day, at least forty-five minutes every day. Uh, Mrs. Price's Algebra Ready and Algebra I classes, um, it's second week of school, and they're already on technology. We have, unfortunately, we don't have the technology that I wish we had, but, um, we do have some laptops that they're able to access, and, uh, so they're using the technology of those laptops, getting on the Reflex, the Math 180. Also, those programs, students can access those at home through internet.
So the forty-five minutes is in addition to their classroom time, or?
Yes. Yes.
I have one final question, if you'll go down to the, I think it's two slides. Yeah, that one. So, we have six instructional coaches at the secondary level and five at the elementary level. How do you interact? In other words, I'm, I'm sure you're seeing trends and information at the secondary level that you should be communicating down to the, to the elementary level to try to, you know, head it off at the pass, so to speak, so that they are gonna be more successful as they move forward?
Yes, sir. We have a, um, we have a division, um, what we call them, we have a literacy team that Dr. Graham helps run from the reading side, that's got a vertical alignment, and then we have a math literacy team as well that has representation from the, the coaches. So, um, it's a little, little less than once a month, we're, we're getting together to, to look at what's happening vertically there. Um, so as Ernestine mentioned, when we talked about, um, helping that transition between the middle and high school, there was, um, extensive, um, coordination across the middle, across all of them, because we, we sent folks to support, we, we spread them out to support BMS and, and- because we, we sent folks to support, we, we spread them out to support BMS and, and BHS as well during the, the placement part as we tried to work on trying to help get kids in the right classes. There was extensive collaboration across, you know, you know, all the middle school folks working together, all the high school folks working together, but then also across middle, middle and high in the feeder schools. So that was one of the, one of the pieces, we were looking at the data vertically, trying to coordinate that.
So the expect, is it a fair expectation after a period of time that as you communicate and develop strategies at the elementary level that you would see less and less issues going to move, transition into high school? Middle school and high school as you start to collaborate and?
Yes, I mean, yeah, the, yes, sir, that would be the hope. The, the issue really comes down to the fact that when we had the reset on the, on the SOL tests, the high school kids faced bigger changes than, than some of the other grade levels. So, things that didn't appear to be problems in the past were now showing up.
Okay, alright, thank you. Board members, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Schultz, Ms. Weaver, Dr. Sears, Ms. Seville, and Ms. Price. Board members, this was an information-only item and does not require action. The next item, end-of-year report and carryover funds request is an action item and is presented for your approval. At the August 5th, 2014 board meeting, Ms. Blackburn provided you with a detailed proposal of how you could allocate carryover funds to meet the critical needs of the school division. I want to also remind you that Ms. Blackburn was, has renewed her recommendation to fund the e-Backpack initiative. Dr. Graham will discuss the e-Backpack initiative in detail in a few minutes. The first two slides are a recap of Ms. Blackburn's recommendations on how the carryover money could be spent. I want to also highlight that Ms. Blackburn has included, as a change, the cost to restore the governor's schools summer, the governor's summer school program at a cost of $7,434. And is shown on the second slide. Now at this time, to provide you with additional information on the e-Back initiative program, Dr. Graham will come forward to the podium.
Thank you. As you may recall, Ms. Blackburn shared a recommendation at the last board meeting to consider using a portion of the carryover funds to support the e-Backpack program. Since this is a one-time opportunity to provide a powerful resource, it is evident in many states that have already implemented one-to-one initiatives and experienced powerful results. So I wanted to share a little bit of that with you. State of Indiana, Indiana, did a one-to-one program. And from that, their results were increased student and teacher engagement, improved academic achievement, improved attendance, and students developed deeper cross-disciplinary knowledge and more in-depth 21st century skills. In Michigan, similar study, the results indicated that student engagement was at an all-time high, that attendance was up, that 21st skills development had increased, and that academic achievement as measured by standardized test was on the rise. And in Maine, when they implemented a one-to-one computing statewide in their middle schools, they saw significant improvements in writing scores on the statewide test. They saw more extensively that students that used the laptops the more, the most scored the best. And of the core content areas, some of the most substantial academic achievement results have been with writing skills throughout all those states. This year, we have an opportunity to have significant state support for the cost towards a one-to-one initiative. To take advantage of the state funding, we do need to act now. As you saw in the video and heard from Julie Kraft and Jennifer Weaver at the last board meeting, we know from our pilot that we saw a significant impact on students and on the teachers that were involved. We also know this is likely a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to develop a program with the state providing the largest portion of the funds. In this case, the state would provide $208,000 the first year. And over four years, the state would provide $800,000, actually over $800,000. So I'm going to show you three charts. And the last chart will be a summation of the whole picture. In this first chart, you see that the carryover budget recommendation, you will see that MCPS to match the grant would be $41,600. That match is based on providing a one-to-one initiative for three schools which qualify. That's Christiansburg High School, Auburn High School, and Eastern Montgomery High School. The additional associated cost would be $89,694. And those costs include teacher devices and mobile device management package. Making MCPS cost in one year, $131,294. And then, um, just below that, if the county included Blacksburg, we would incur the cost of devices of $191,750 plus the additional cost of $5,940, resulting in a total of $197,690.
So can I stop there and ask a question?
Certainly.
So I add the two together and that's what my cost is going to be in year one?
If you include Blacksburg, yes.
If you include Blacksburg? And then I deduct the 208 from it and that would be my final cost?
Deduct the 208?
Says the state contribution each year is 208?
Yeah, that's separate, I just put Montgomery County cost in the above. So the 208 is, you wouldn't deduct that?
I'm sorry?
You would not deduct that, that's separate.
So the 131 is already the deduction cost?
Correct.
It's okay, alright, that's what I wanted to understand.
So is that clear?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So really, the decision the board is faced with at this time is, does the board support an e-Backpack program? And if so, would you support the three eligible schools during the first year? And, or would you also support Blacksburg High School? Or would you want to wait and do Blacksburg at a later time? BHS could ultimately be added at any time since the state isn't giving any funding for BHS. This next slide takes you into the future years. In year two, for the three eligible schools, we must factor in the remaining $8,660 to make, to be made up for the ITRT salary. Since that would be, the $8,660 would be from one-time carryover money this year. You see on the chart the cost for three, for years three and four as well. The top chart, chart shows the three schools. And if you wanted to add Blacksburg High School, the bottom chart shows the cost of Blacksburg High School. Each year, in sus, in subsequent years, you should opt to include BHS. So whichever year you opt, that's their cost. Note year three in the bottom chart, based on our implementation experience and the addition of Blacksburg High School, we believe an additional technician might be needed in year three.
That's only if we, I'm sorry.
Question, if, if, um, you didn't add Blacksburg to this, then you wouldn't need that technician?
I think after year one, we would need to really evaluate and see the workload. Because we could find out that we do, but we put it in year three.
So you're telling me that regardless, you're probably going to need another technician?
We would evaluate at the end of the first year, but sooner or later, we were going to need another technician because of the quantity of devices that you would have and someone to service those devices.
But definitely you would need one by the third year.
That's what we think. And back on the other side, I put a little asterisk saying you might need them sooner. So if we participate for one year, we will touch the lives of about 500 students. Over four years, that would impact 2,000 students. While we know local, local funds are limited, this is an opportunity to obtain funding from the state and to provide a powerful program for students. It also provides a tool for teachers to allow teachers to find more engaging and real-time methods to reach every child. You just heard them talk about using the computers daily. Imagine having one in your own hands every day. So in this, in the age of technology, we need to prepare our students for college and the competitive job market. So on this last slide, it's just a, at a glance slide so that you can look at everything on one slide. You'll see in year one, this is, these are the same numbers that you saw in the previous slides. Forty-one thousand plus the additional cost of eighty-nine thousand something and a subtotal of 131,000. Then that's just, everything for the three schools is on the left side. And then if you add Blacksburg High School, that's on the right school, right side. The first goal mentioned by the state is to improve student achievement and graduation dropout rates by providing the infrastructure to extend learning capabilities and create a personalized learning experience. In our short pilot, we saw the potential to do just that, to realize that goal. You could see in the first pilot, the heightened engagement, which may especially benefit children who would not otherwise afford a device. This is an opportunity which we believe warrants serious consideration. So I'll stop and pause for any questions?
I have a couple. The first one is, what is our absolute drop-dead date to approach, or to be included in this program as far as the state is concerned?
We have, we have the term of this year, we would need to start this year. But to ask the board of supervisors for money, or to use the end-of-the-year money, that's whenever the date is.
Right, so we, there's no deadline that we have to, like, we don't have to say to the state, by November 1st, we want to participate in this program?
If we don't use the money this year, then we will lose that opportunity. I don't know that there's a
There's not, there's not a date?
Within the year.
Okay.
My second question is?
I, I should add to that, though. You have to consider, you have to order the devices in order to be able to use them in the year. You're going to have to plan.
Right, well, it, it, it's related to something I'm going to bring up in just a minute, that's why I asked the question. The other thing that I have, I noticed that every year, the same amount is given to this, that the state is requiring us to give is the same as, and the same amount that they're actually going to give is the same. Is there not any consideration for different student, you know, numbers of students for each year? Or is it, that's just what the state is saying? Based upon this first year, we're going to base the next four to be the exact same?
We use that first-year number, but you look at student enrollment when you're
So the state would adjust and we would have to adjust our amount that we would need to give?
That is my understanding.
Okay, is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, so this, the numbers here don't necess, they're, there's going to be some fluidity to them?
Right.
Okay.
What, how many were in the pilot program at Auburn?
We did two total classes.
Fifty or ninety?
Do you remember?
It was two Auburn and two Christiansburg. So about a year.
About a hundred, about ninety to a hundred.
Ninety, yeah, okay, that's what I thought. I talked to Carl Pauli about that, he said, um, it was done. And those kids had an experience that they would probably never forget the rest of their lives. So it's the type of program where if we do it this coming year and all of a sudden, the roof caves in somewhere and we have no money for the next year, regardless, it's still an experience that these youngsters will have, that they'll never have again, possibly, or would probably never have the chance to have if we don't go into adventure.
That was exactly our thought, if we can offer it now and have the state give us $200,000.
If we can go the second, third, and fourth year, hallelujah. But if we don't jump on this wagon now, we got 500 kids plus, we're going to have a, that's a great opportunity.
And to add to that, there is not a penalty if we, after this year, we can't afford to keep going. There's no penalty either.
Well, the, the, the only penalty is our kids will hurt because they won't have the second or third year.
Correct.
I have a question, um, and this is just completely for information. I don't want anybody gathering anything from it. With the new schools, Auburn and Blacksburg both, in the form of technology by being a new facility, how many more computers in the classrooms, I understand it's completely different than having a device in your hand, does, do those students have compared to the older high schools?
I think Ms. Weaver just worked on the FFNE budget, do you, can you answer that?
It's actually not drastically different because technology's worked really hard to supply them with mobile laptop carts and to continue to
Right, I understand.
Those things, so it's, um, student availability to technology is not drastically different. Teachers have more access to technology in the new buildings. And everyone has access to the 21st century classroom. So it's not drastically different.
So, like, say, per each classroom, how many, is there like one card available? I mean, as far as iPads or things like that? I mean, just when we were going on the tours, it just seemed like there were more. And that's kind of where I'm coming from, whether it be computer stations or iPad cards or, you know, whatever it might be. It just seemed there was more availability in the newer facilities than what I've seen in some of the older ones. I mean, I, I'm not going on smart boards, I'm going on personal type, you know, systems.
I think in the older buildings, they have more computer labs. And in the newer buildings, they have more wireless labs. So, that's different. But in terms of sheer number of devices available for student use, I don't think it's drastically different.
Board members, are there questions?
How expensive is the device we are talking about? I know we are given $400 per student by state. And then at one point, we looked $699 per device, now where are we? $650? So if the additional cost only covers the covers of the iPads and the teacher devices, so we are saying that 280,000 plus 41,600 has to cover all the devices, physical devices, is it what it is? The state gives 208. And then 20% of our part is 41.6. So that gives us 249.6 or 249,600. So is that the amount we're getting all devices for $650 piece?
So? You can see on this one, the, um, the title, it, it is including covering additional cost of the device as well. Our match goes towards the additional, the difference between
Additional devices?
Not additional devices, the additional cost of the device. The difference between what the state's giving us and what we're going to pay for the devices we've selected.
Additional devices, it's listed on there would mean though, we have to add the teacher devices as well.
And the management would include the insurance and everything that's it takes to keep these devices up?
That's correct. Originally, when we did some of our first numbers, we calculated insurance separately. But the package they have picked includes the insurance.
So that contributes to the higher price of the device?
A couple of general comments, I mean, and I think I've stated to this board either via email or in other conversations that I supported as long as we include Blacksburg High School. But I also believe that what we're doing, if we vote this, is that we're committing a long-term investment for the next four years. This is not something that we would just do for one year. So we're committing our budget, if you look at those numbers, we're already putting a lot of money in a budget that we don't know a whole lot about in the coming years. And if you read the paper recently, the governor said that there is a, what, a $400,000 shortfall in one year and another, almost $800,000 shortfall coming.
That would be $347 million for next year and $536 million the following year for the state budget.
For the state budget. And what we're doing is we're committing about 1.1 million dollars, almost 1.2 million dollars right here in front of us. You know, it's, it's a difficult decision for me when we're looking at how we struggled in the previous years with budget. I'm, I'm all for technology, I'm all for this. And we definitely don't want to look away from a $208,000 that the state's going to give us, but it's, um, this is a lot of money that we're putting upfront without any knowledge. And we have to commit to it. I think if we vote on it and we go forward with it, then it's, it's part of our budget and and it doesn't come out for the next four years. And it could go up, as Mr. Lyons pointed out, there's some fluidity here. And unfortunately, I think that is, that number is going to fluid up. It's not gonna fluid down.
We've got two great new high schools and other great high schools, and people moved to our county. Another item that we, we need to remember is that we committed to continue to improve our salary compensation. And in order to do that in year two, it's a cost of two-point-oh-four million dollars.
Well, we're not making a four-year commitment, we're making a one-year commitment. We're looking at this year right now. And, and we've, I think we've stated over and over again, if, if we can do it for this one year, there's gonna be five-hundred students who will have incredible experiences. If we can do it next year, that would be great. But there's no commitment that says that we can do it next year. I think we need to take this thing one year at a time, and let's hope for the best once we get through this year. If we, if we look at this as a four-year commitment and say, "We can't do it because it's a four-year commitment," we're making a big mistake. We're making a horrendous mistake.
We're gonna disagree on that. Okay? Because I think it's a long-term thing. You don't just go in and pull the plug on something like this after you can't, you can't fund it after one year.
I would hope you, we wouldn't.
You know, "Well, we don't have any guarantees." That's what I'm, reason I'm bringing this up.
We can guarantee one year.
And I, I don't agree. I think if we need to guarantee, at least if we're gonna do this, that we're doing it for the full ride of four years.
Because that's how the whole thing's gonna be affected.
But for me, it's also not fair for the three schools that can get the grant to suffer, just because we might not can afford to add the fourth one. Even though, yes, I think fair across the board is great, but we do pilot programs in each different school all the time, and not all students get to, get to do those things. And that's, you know, a little bit, I, in my thoughts, the first year, let's try to see how it goes before we initial the extra two-hundred thousand. You know, like I said, that's not the great way to look at things. But why make three schools of students not be able to engage in something like this because of lack of funding?
Why do the same thing at Blacksburg because of lack of funding? There's students there too, and they have the same needs.
And we've made lots of sacrifices for Blacksburg as well, that the other schools have not gotten, as far as that goes.
Well, I'm not trying to pit it-
Many, many sacrifices.
Not pitting the schools against each other. I'm saying it's, it's all in.
I'm just saying.
It's all in.
But, like I said, when you have to look at this openly, you have to look at it openly.
I am.
The, the only reason that this is even available to us is because of three schools. Three schools, and if we're, if we're trying to focus our district on the data, and how we're moving, and where, how we're not moving, it's those three schools that need the movement, you know? I do understand that there are students at Blacksburg High School who need the same kind of support and the same kind of opportunity. And it would be very hard for me to say, "No, we can't include Blacksburg." You know, Joe, one of the few times you and I are gonna agree is that this is a one-year commitment. We do not have to move forward with this for any more than one year at this point. And even if we include Blacksburg at this point, we can still say, "We can't do Blacksburg for the next year." We can, we can still do the three schools who we're gonna get the matching funds, or, not the matching funds, but gonna get resources to help support the program. But after listening to those students, uh, two weeks ago, or whenever they came and, and spoke with us, well, wait, I take that back. It was the video that we saw of them. How can we not, you know, give that opportunity for these children to be successful? I mean, it's just, it was just amazing to me how engaged they were. And listening to our teachers tonight talk about the key point is to get those students engaged, and that's how we move things forward and, and be able to make sure that they're ready for the world when they leave Montgomery County Public Schools. I can't say no to this, um, opportunity. I don't know where I'm at right this minute, as far as Blacksburg for this year. Because we have said, we've made a commitment to our teachers as far as compensation, our employees as far as compensation, and we need to stick to that. But I've been around long enough to understand, and we've made commitments to a lot of things, and unfortunately, the funds are not there to be able to do them when we'd like to do them. But this is a huge opportunity.
Ms. Franklin, we must have the same sheet of music. For once, we do. I am in full agreement. I think, we, the reason that I will support Blacksburg this year is because the money's available to support Blacksburg this year. Next year, and I think, and I think you're absolutely right, there's three schools that have brought this to our attention. We need to focus on those three schools. This year, we're fortunate, we can focus on a fourth school. Next year, again, we'll focus on the three schools and see what happens. And I think that this opportunity is one we cannot let slide by.
This is brought before us for action, so there's other things in the carryover budget that we need to look at. I'm going to, um, you have a, a summary sheet there in front of you. I don't know if you can bring that up or not, the summary sheet?
Slide one or two.
That includes everything in the carryover?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they gave it to us.
You gave a hard copy there?
Yeah, we do have a hard copy.
I, I don't pay attention to the paper, I'm looking at mine. I pay.
One thing that we may want to consider, you know, with this carryover, making this an action, I may, I'm not saying I'm doing this right now, but we may consider making a motion of tabling this for the reason of, we don't know if the Board of Supervisors is going to approve the other five-hundred-plus-thousand dollars that we've requested. Because knowing whether or not we're actually going to get that would have a bearing on what I actually think we should spend the carryover funds on.
Well, the only problem with that is, in the process of this, they, we have to present it to them. And either they're gonna vote on it and reject it, or they're gonna vote on it and carry it forward. Let me add a little bit more information. I don't, I wouldn't, I don't know if this is definitive or not, but there is some grumblings that's coming over from the other side that they may be willing to, um, to match funds, um, that, because we've put forward five-hundred-and-seventy-five additional requests, as you realize. We don't know for certain whether or not that's gonna go through, but one, one, some of the grumblings is coming back is that they would be looking for this board to match those monies and to make them available.
Well, again, that's what I'm saying. I mean, we're, we're basing this upon, you know, this carryover that we have. It's a total of about one-point-seven million dollars. And we're, we're making these assumptions that we're going to use five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars of that to match the five-hundred-and-seventy-five that we've, that we're requesting in addition to that. My, my problem with that is if we, if they were to say, "We're not going to get the five-thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars we've requested in addition," it would change how I think we should spend the one-point-seven.
I had the initial, my initial reaction, I first saw this and discussed it with the superintendent, is the five-seventy-five doesn't belong here because it's capital. And I think the two should be separate, and we should be talking about them in separate conversations. I've always said that. She left it in here because basically, and my experience has been, that we should go ahead and vote on something, because as Dr. Staton said, we've got to submit this to the Board of Supervisors for their approval. So tabling it just delays the process and delays their action. Because they're honestly sitting there waiting on us to, to come to them and say, "Okay, here's how we're gonna spend our carryover money." And if they come back to us and say, you know, they don't, they have in the past, in some instances, looked at it line by line, but they don't scrutinize it necessarily line by line. They'll see what we have here, ask questions, and they'll vote on it as a package.
It seems like there, those two things are two separate actions, though, correct? The five-seventy-five that we've requested and this?
No, it'll be rolled into the carryover, as she's got it stated here. Now, they may come back and say, as a, as a separate action, they're gonna give us an additional, as Dr. Staton has said, an additional five-seventy-five, and yet that would be a separate vote.
That's what I'm talking about. That, that's what we approved the request for a few weeks ago, was that additional money. And they, they were not able to vote on it before this meeting. So, again, if we're presenting this to them, and this is the way we're gonna spend this money, I'm, I would be voting on that, assuming that we're still going to get that other money. Otherwise, if we, if there was a, and a chance that we're not gonna get it, I would change maybe what we would, what we're presenting right here. That's my struggle with it.
Okay.
Because I do think that we do need that money, like, we've, we've, we're kind of setting that five-seventy-five that we've requested in addition to this, the five-seventy-five we've included in that, to get us about one-point-two million dollars for capital expenditures. My, my stance on that would be, I think we do need about that amount of money for capital expended, expenditures. And so, if they're not gonna give us that additional, then I would say we need to funnel a little bit more than five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars out of this to capital expenses. That's where I'm, that's why I'm struggling with saying I would vote-
That would be your approach?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that doesn't necessarily mean it's everybody's approach.
Yeah.
Okay, and I, I'm not in favor of tabling it. I think we need to do, to vote on something and give it to them so that they have it. And they can look at it, um, and move forward with it, and we can come back. We can always come back and massage it.
Come back, and then if we don't get it.
So-
Now, wait a minute. When you say we can come back if we don't get it and tweak things, we have been in the position before, where we've put something forward to them and said, "This is what we're gonna use the money for." And then, the money didn't get used the way it was stated, when it was put before them, and it caused a problem.
Mm-hmm.
So, we need to be sure what we're doing here. So, if they say, "Here's, we can't give you the whole five-hundred-and-seventy-five, but we'll give you half of it," you know, then we have to, we're still gonna save, we're still gonna keep our five-hundred-and-seventy-five there. We're still gonna do everything else that we said we're gonna do. We just won't have that extra money to make the one-point-two, or whatever it comes out to. I mean, I'm just very leery of us saying, "Well, if they don't give us all the money, we'll come back and tweak everything else."
Which is what we did with that, when that occurred.
I agree.
Let me, let me put this on the table. I want to make a motion that we use the, um, the carryover funds as proposed.
By the superintendent?
Yeah, by the superintendent.
Okay.
The way the discussion can continue.
Mr. Ivers has made a motion to, to use the carryover funds as recommended by the superintendent in the proposal before us.
Second, for the sake of discussion.
And we have a second for discussion. So now we're in discussion. Thank you, Mr. Ivers.
And I, I definitely agree with what happened a couple of years ago with that money issue. And I was meaning more in the sense, if it were voted down and we didn't get any of it, and we knew we wouldn't get the money. It's not like we're spending it somewhere else. We're having to rethink the money we have.
So, any further discussion on the budget that the superintendent has recommended to us?
I'll just say, I, you know, if you're all the call, I voted no to the budget that was put out, our entire budget. Because I didn't believe that we had enough information to make the decisions that we needed to make around budget.
Right.
But with this, we're putting money back in, so I'm ready to vote yes.
All right, we'll do roll call, please, if there's no further discussion.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corrine?
No.
Mr. Lyons?
No.
Ms. Woolsey?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, this does include Blacksburg for one year, so I'm going to vote yes, since it does include Blacksburg for the one year.
It does include Blacksburg?
I'd like to, I'd like to double-check that, if that's okay, Mr. Jones. I'm gonna walk up here, is that okay?
It doesn't include.
Yeah.
I don't think it does.
Yeah, it says right here.
Please excuse me, Dr. Staton, and let me know.
Backpack.
Yeah, she, she put it in that as an option if you wanted to include it. And I think in your discussion, that's what you said you were gonna do.
So, Mr. Ivers, that was your motion?
Yes, definitely.
And Ms. Bond, you confirm that as your second?
Yes.
It was under the two-seventy-two, nine-sixty-one, is the way I understood it.
And with that, we have an approved use of carryover funds.
That's listed as options, is how I read it. I don't see that it specifically says that, but the two-seventy-two.
Two-seventy-two. Brenda?
You can't hear me? With Mr. Jones's vote, we have an approved use of the carryover funds.
Okay, thank you.
And based on what I heard this board's discussion is, is that we would give the superintendent direction that, that those options would be for the Blacksburg backpack. That's how I would interpret that. Correct me if I'm wrong in my interpretation.
I'm gonna have to say, with that motion that was made, I don't know that that was clear, that Blacksburg was being included in that.
I don't think it was.
Just for clarity, I don't know that we need, you know, we voted on it, but I'm just saying, for clarity.
The motion that I would propose, that I had put forward, was her proposal. And I had stated before, because there's money for Blacksburg this year, we're including it. So-
But that option also, the, the bus replacement may be needed, or maintenance needed, or, I mean, restore supply budget. So we are saying that we're not doing any of those.
Well, no, we are.
And two-seventy-two, out of two-seventy-two, we need how much of it for Blacksburg High School? One-hundred-and-ninety-seven, six-ninety. So there's not gonna be much to cover the other options on that, uh, option budget. I'm just putting it out.
Sure there is.
The, now, where's the right sheet of paper here?
We'll seek clarity on that and provide the board with clarity on it.
No, 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 I think we need to make sure we're clear on what just happened here before we, before we leave. So, the way I understand what was put in front of us was that everything, all the capital projects would be covered with the five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, and that if the supervisors wanted to give us the five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand more, that it would be added to this. So all those things would be covered. Even if the supervisors didn't give us any money, we would still cover those capital projects. Is that what your concern was?
Well, I think the subtotal section, the options confuse me. Because that options where the Blacksburg included-
Dr. Graham?
Has other things in it.
Would it feel more comfortable if there was a second motion clarifying the optional expenditure?
And I'm, I'm gonna ask Katie Miano to help me. But the subtotal section, you would take the Blacksburg learning backpack, as Mr. Jones has suggested, from that subtotal. And then any extra money could be used for the options in that group. And you did the subtraction, didn't you?
If you look on your sheet, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not having a problem with that.
No, right.
They, they also put the bus replacement, and some additional capital maintenance projects in that,
If you take the one-ninety-seven, six-ninety that shows up in the year one for here for VHS, if you take that out of the two-seventy-two, nine-sixty-one, sixty-six, it leaves you with seventy-five, two-seventy-one, sixty-six. That can be allocated-
For the others.
For the other options.
Which would be additional buses, as far as more than the two buses that the five-hundred-and-seventy-five would be covering, right? Okay, that's what I thought.
So the motion is okay and clear? Everybody's, okay?
I don't know how clear it was, but it was voted on.
Are we more comfortable with the explanation today?
Yeah. I mean, I knew what I was voting on, okay?
I mean, I knew it too, but...
Okay, thank you, sir. The next item is the revised budget fiscal year two thousand fourteen-fifteen. The revised budget for two thousand fourteen-fifteen is presented as an action item for your approval. The total net change for-
total net change for the Montgomery County Public Schools is a decrease of 66,107 in state revenue, and a reduction in the required expenditures for the VRS, Group Life Insurance, and VRS Retiree Healthcare Credit of 120,247 dollars. The net change is in the decreases in revenue and required expenditures is 55,140 dollars.
I move that we, um, approve the revised budgets fiscal year 2014-2015?
Need a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion on the revised operating budget as presented?
Uh, I do just want to say, I, my intention is to vote no again, really based upon principle about how we arrived at the original budget, but I do want to commend, um, Ms. Blackburn and the, uh, the rest of the staff we're actually including, especially on this report as we're doing it. The thing that I really wanted, which was the major category expenditure summary, that I've, uh, was a part of my original, uh, reason for not voting for the budget. Uh, I'm glad that it's, that part has been changed, um, but overall, because of the way we arrived at the original budget, and we're just really, and we're going to make them some adjustments, I do intend to vote no.
Any further comments or questions? Again, since this is budget, I'll ask for roll call.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
No, for the same reasons as before.
Mr. Ivers?
Yes.
Ms. Corrine?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
No.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Revised budget has been approved.
Okay, the next item is, uh, the facilities update. Dan Baranau, Director of Facilities, will provide you with the facilities update.
Good evening. Done a whole lot of things this summer. We still have a lot of work to do in a lot of areas, but we did get a lot done in a short time, uh, with everybody's help. Uh, the two roof projects, uh, the center section of Margaret Beeks and the annex section of Christiansburg Elementary were successfully re-roofed just in time for school to open. Uh, large projects, uh, executed, I think, very well. Uh, we've made some project, progress on the Christiansburg area feasibility study. We're working on that diligently. It's very important. It's very complex, and I know Ms. Black, Blackburn is keeping you informed on that. Shawsville Middle School Annex demolition, uh, it's going, uh, the beginning of the summer, right after the Fourth of July, uh, celebration in Shawsville, uh, the people removing the asbestos-containing material, and other hazardous materials came in, uh, completed that, and then, uh, right before school started, we were able to begin the demolition proj, process. I was there, uh, with Principal Dickinson on the first day of school, and work was going on across the street. Was not a lot of noise, amazingly. Uh, you know, things were coming down, and students were learning and teachers were teaching, so it seems to be going well. It's well managed, and everything is contained and safe. That should be another couple of weeks before the total building is down to the foundation and the slab. Then about a month after that, the, the things underneath the slab and everything else will be removed, and then the site turned to a gre, a green site. Uh, Christiansburg High School gym entrance doors, uh, we had a little hiccup at the beginning of those in one area, the doors that go into the commons. Uh, we found a problem with a missing lintel, uh, in the doorway. We had to go back to the engineers and get a lintel designed and put in, uh, small change order made, and they got started in earnest finally, uh, this week, and they're working late, and we hope in the next couple of weeks those doors will be finished. All the doors were there, they were ready to begin, and we had that hiccup, but they're moving along. Uh, that will be a big improvement for Christiansburg High School. Uh, at Bellevue and Christiansburg High School, we were able, uh, to replace the fire alarm panels and devices that were very old, and we utilized some devices that actually were, uh, salvaged from all the mobile units that we had at Old Christiansburg Middle School for BMS that we had to put in. We rented those units, but we had to buy those fire alarms, and we had them stored, and we were able to come up and basically modernize, uh, the big one at Christiansburg High School, a great improvement, uh, from the original, almost 40-year-old fire alarm system to a new one, and Bellevue the same. Uh, we were able to get, uh, parking lots repaved at Christiansburg Elementary, where you could see the schools there, CPS, Bellevue, Gilbert, Lincoln, and those were completed. We were also able to, uh, start replacing the windows that are in process at the Facilities Department, uh, before they actually fell out. Uh, they're in process, and the town just started, you'll notice, the town just started the sidewalk in front of our, uh, building there at Facilities, and we've been wanting to replace that retaining wall that was crumbling for years and years. So we're taking the opportunity to slot in a whole lot of money to do that, so we don't have to rip out new sidewalk to replace the retaining walls. And, uh, right at the end of the year, uh, we found a bad leak in the boiler at Old Christiansburg Middle School, the lower building, where the programs were moving back into ISS and Rivendell, and we were able to get, get that, the cost to repair it was about two-thirds of the cost to replace it. It was such an old boiler, uh, we thought the investment was best, because we can also sal, it's of a size that we can, if we need to salvage it and use it at, I think, three different, uh, schools, we figured. So a lot, uh, going on there in a short time, a lot of, uh, work getting done. Uh, the smaller projects, the PTA and booster projects, uh, the ones that are highlighted are the ones that have some action on them. Unfortunately, the track, uh, at BHS, you know, the boosters are, bought the rubber surface for the track. Uh, it was contingent upon that track being perfect according to the specifications, both longitudinally the whole quarter mile, and cross-slope, uh, limitations that they have, and also, uh, the neatness across the slope, as far as the levelness of the slope. Very difficult spec. We found when the rubber track contractor came, that, uh, the original asphalt track was not to spec. We didn't realize how far, how many different places. We thought it was only a couple that, uh, could be done easily, but, uh, contractor, we brought them back, showed them, uh, and they've attempted, I believe, uh, four times to, uh, remill and repave that track, and as late as Friday and Monday, they re-milled the track again, and they'll be paving it this week. Uh, we still believe we could get the rubber surface in, uh, this year. The Harding Avenue Safe Routes to School Trail, uh, the town did not get that started this summer. They did get the design complete. It's out to bid, and that will soon start. The one at Margaret Beeks, they were able to complete the path portion of it. I don't know if you've been there. Uh, I don't think they have the fence complete in the back, nor the signs, but for all intents and purposes, the path is complete and connected to the neighborhood path that's behind the school. Uh, and that was done by actually the Public Works, uh, Department of the Town of Blacksburg. We also, uh, well, Christiansburg High School's project to, uh, upgrade their audi, audio system in the auditorium. If any of you were at the gr, grand opening, uh, ceremony, you heard that, and it's, uh, a really good improvement, uh, to the auditorium there. Uh, the murals there at Beeks are in progress. A, a couple new ones that came in at the end of the year. One of them's already finished, the second to the bottom. That was moving the practice goals that they had put on the middle school fields. They moved them, uh, up to the new high school multipurpose fields. And then there's, uh, a couple new ones. The last line is actually two separate projects, one's for additional, uh, steps to the tennis courts up the bank, uh, to supplement the paved path that goes to the tennis courts, and also the Rotary Club, uh, I think of the Noon Club of Blacksburg is sponsoring, uh, a windbreak of trees at two sides of, the two windward sides of the tennis courts. And we're, we just received those, and we're in the process of reviewing those. The slide that you cannot read, but I will give you the updates. Uh, I, I like to give you all the information the county gives us. I will tell you the update, updated items are, uh, former Price's Fork Elementary School, uh, the Board of Supervisors rezoned the property for development at their May 27th meeting. I think we had a meeting that, uh, same week, and I announced that, but they updated their status report, saying that they did that. The other two are the next two, the former Shawsville Elementary School. Uh, they've surveyed the property, and apparently the Board of Supervisors are currently discussing the next steps for that property, I think. Because there's a large section of that property is Parks and Rec Fields, uh, they're considering, uh, do they keep the whole property, or do they just keep the Parks and Rec Fields portion and sell off the rest? I'm not sure exactly, but they're in discussions. And I, the si, former central office on Junkin Street, they were planning, I think, to a, actively advertise this, that this summer, the, uh, I don't think they were able to get to that, but may update this, that they plan to, uh, offer the property for sale later this year. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, Jason's going to talk about the Auburn Middle School update, but I did want to mention, we put out that we're going to have the tours for Auburn Middle School, uh, tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, and also Tuesday. Want to let you know, uh, Wendell and Todd King will be tomorrow. Right now, s, Sarah and Joey will be on Thursday. We have you there. And Mary Biggs on Friday, and so far we have, uh, Goonan and, uh, Matt Gabriel for Tuesday. So if anyone else would like to go, and if you can't go on those times, I'm more than willing to make separate arrangements, uh, with you so you can see it.
Dan, could you add me to the Tuesday one?
I thought I was on there.
Tuesday?
Yes. I thought I emailed you back, I'm sorry.
Tuesday, the 26th. I don't have you on this sheet, but I'm sorry, I'll put you down.
It's okay, thank you. What time is, uh, tomorrow?
It's five.
Five, okay.
Five.
Thank you.
Okay.
And so, with the former Blacksburg Middle School, still no movement? Just sitting there, right?
There's no update, ma'am.
There's a article in the paper about it, there about a week or two ago.
They're going to be, yeah, in the process of, process of getting together.
If I could have a penny for every person who's been on a subcommittee or a committee for that building, I wouldn't have to go to work.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dan. At this time, Jason Pack, uh, would you please, um, come forward and give the board an update on capital projects at, uh, New Auburn Middle School?
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Staden, uh, thank you for allowing me the time to update you on Auburn Middle School. Uh, we've made a lot of progress over the summer, so we'll go through and take a look at what's been done. Uh, this is a view looking southwest. It's a view you would see if you're coming along Route Eight. Uh, we have the metal roof over the student entry and main entry canopies nearing completion. Uh, in this photo, we have the base layer of the parking lot in place and some temporary lines shown. We now have the top coat on and most of the permanent striping done. Uh, this was prior to school starting, so we wanted some spaces there before, before we started.
Is that the bus loop there to the left?
It is. It is. That was my, uh, next comment. The bus loop, uh, base paving is installed, and, uh, we'll put the top layer in as weather permits. Uh, and also, it'll be done on the weekend to, uh, avoid the bus traffic as well. Uh, concrete sidewalk work is ongoing. This next slide is looking northeast, uh, as if you were looking from Auburn High School. Uh, the brick veneer is completed, and the drive-it cornice is currently being installed. In this slide, on the left is the student entry. We have the drive-it complete. Uh, the metal roof trim is ongoing, and the storefront is installed. To the right, uh, again, is the base paving and temporary parking lot for the teachers and visitors at, uh, the existing middle school. In this next image, uh, the image to the left is the band room. We have the first coat of paint in, uh, ceiling grid and duct work, and, uh, under this floor protection is the new VCT flooring system. Uh, in the right image is the existing auditorium. We've done some hard ceiling work there. Uh, ceiling grid is in, speakers, lighting, and some sprinkler rough ends. In the final slide, uh, in the left, we have the administrative area reception. We have casework, ceiling grid, storefront doors, and lighting in. Uh, in the image to the right, this is in the old building, uh, in one of the classrooms there, and we have casework installed and ceiling grid and lighting as well. Uh, the project remains on time and under budget currently.
Good answer. Board members, do you have questions?
Nope, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chase.
Thank you.
Uh, board members, this final item, um, insurance for board members was placed on the agenda at the request of the school board to give you, um, an opportunity to discuss insurance and other benefits for members of the school board. Should the board decide to pursue providing additional fringe benefits for school board members, the board will need to amend Policy 1-2.5 to reflect the change. If approved by the board, the earliest board members could join the insurance plan would be October of this year, when the plan is renewed. So, I present it for your, um, discussion.
Well, since I brought it up, um, I did, uh, you know, one of, one of my discussion pieces last, when we brought it up two weeks ago, you know, I've been on the board nine years, and I've listened to everybody talk about not having raises, and, and I've been on the board nine years, and not only have we not had a raise, but we, you know, don't have insurance benefits. Um, and, uh, talked about it a few years ago, but, you know, when we couldn't give any kind of raises to teachers, there was no way that I could ask for something like that. But this year, since we've been able to do that, and we've done some other things, I, and the intern is changing, and I spoke with some board supervisors, and I found out that, you know, I mean, our districts are the same. We all run for election, and I've had the privilege of being, and I have ran against three very strong opponents each time I've ran, and sometimes that's not the case in all of our seats, but I do think some of the things that comes along with compensation to a board gets other interests involved, and we have to keep that in mind for when each one of us might decide we don't want to run again. So with that, I looked at the board supervisors, and, and they make like twice what we make. Plus, they have benefits, plus they have the option for a phone, and I did actually call a board member today and, and verify that before I said it. So, you know, it's up to us, because I did speak to two, and they said, well, that's up to the school board to vote on that at that point. So, here I am.
So, who buries the cause?
I don't know.
How does this cause?
I don't know. That's the, that's what part of the discussion, you know?
How does this impact our budget when we?
I don't know.
You got, anybody got any question? I mean, it's a budgetary impact. That's what I want to know first. You can keep, you can keep your jacket off, you don't want to. It's nearly 10 o'clock, come on.
Especially the last, the last thing to stay warm.
Yeah, you take the, the rates that we currently have, um, I believe it's going to be about 600- You take the, the rates that we currently have, I believe it's going to be about $630 a month, times 12, which is about $7,200 a year.
Okay.
Because we couldn't offer any additional beyond what, I believe that's right, anything additional what we offer the employees, additional insurance to the board that we do to the employees, and that's what we would offer the, any employee coming as well.
Is that a single employee you just mentioned?
Yes.
What about a family?
Employee only. Now, the family rates I have in front of me, hang on just a second, let me grab this. Okay. $649, I'm sorry, for monthly costs, so you multiply that by 12 for employee only. Family, again, the school board would pay the difference in the premium cost and the employee only cost. And so for a family, that would cost an employee $974 a month.
Cost the employee that much?
Yes, sir.
And for me, I was meaning more just like employees have, single subscriber, you know? And that's pretty much what I think the amenity that's offered to the board supervisor.
Yes, ma'am, and that would be the cost of the school board regardless, because each plan is just giving the $649 toward the premium. Because the total premium for a family is $1,624.85 per month.
I suppose the obvious questions are going to be, obviously, as we vote on it, do each one of us need the insurance and do we make it an option as opposed to giving it to all the, the board members? Then that raises another question, if someone opts out of it, do we compensate them for opting out of it? I mean, there's a lot of things for us to think through in doing this. I, I do agree with Ms. Bond, I do think that there is, you know, the supervisors, the board of supervisors do get some extra benefits, obviously, and maybe it is, it is a fair thing for us to do. I, I'm open for how we would discuss through that. But I do think we are, we are opening up a can of worms with those things in mind, whether or not each one of us would need it, want it, and if we would offer compensation otherwise.
Well, and if I may, why, why would it be a can of worms for us, but it's not for them? I don't understand that. And, you know, that's kind of one of those, and I get that things have to be changed, even for a raise, but, you know, and I think some people in the public think we make a tremendous amount of money and the $5,000 a year that we make covers very little. Or not even that, it's only $4,800. And I, you know, so I think the, you know?
The can of worms is the change. It's the perception of the change.
Exactly. So just with me kind of saying that to get it on public record so people don't think we make a fortune in doing this job, it, you know, it helps cover the time. Because like I said, even this year, we've not had so extreme amount of meetings, but the nine years I've been on the board, I've seen weeks when we've went a whole year and had meetings every single week and have gone many different places and took many days off. That's my reasoning for asking this, for in case this goes further than this room.
Mr. King, what, you have something?
Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to point out that, to respond to Mr. Lyons' inquiries, the statute that governs this provision for the board of supervisors reads as follows, "Members of each governing body may receive the same fringe benefits which are given to county employees generally." And it's from that statute that we have the, you all have the authority to adopt the same for yourself. So I don't believe that it was mandatorily imposed that seven of you receive it. All it says is if you, on an individual basis, would elect to participate, you could. The, we've, we just, in anticipation of tonight's discussion, pulled a couple of school board policies where they have done this, and the language is very simple. "School board members may participate in the division's group insurance plan." That's all it says.
Okay.
So I believe that Mr. McAlandre's explanation is apt, which is you would get the employee contribution that other employees of the district get. If you want the family plan, you pay the difference.
Right.
You pay the employees' portion of an individual plan.
Okay, understood, thank you.
And the same, from what I understand, like the cell phones for the other county, it's an option as well, like some took it and some didn't. So with knowing all that information is why I felt I could bring it forward.
As far as the health insurance goes, if a board member here wants to participate in it, I mean, if we put it in our language, we voted, we had to vote it as far as changing policy, if we voted in changing policy, I think it should be an opt-in thing. And if a board member needs it, then I have no issues with that, as long as we understand the budgetary impact of that, the budgetary impact of it.
Right. Well, I just figured, I, I was just doing the math on it for this year, and I think I came up to right under $55,000 if all seven of us participated.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
So.
No, no health insurance is cheap.
It's not.
I pay quite a bit.
And understanding that, and if we made a lot of money, I wouldn't ask. And if we've had a raise in the last nine years, I wouldn't ask, but we haven't and we don't. And we give a lot of time and I just, I feel like we are deserving if we choose to do so. No.
Well, I have to say that I ran for this position as a service job to this community. It was not at all to make any money and I don't feel that, you know, it's, it's nice that I'm compensated a bit, but that is not why I'm sitting right here. So I don't feel that this policy needs to be changed at this time.
I don't, I don't think any of us ran for the money.
So do?
I spent, man, that's not.
No, I'm laughing because when I ran, I didn't know you got paid. I'm serious. I'm serious. I did not know you got paid.
Well, that's not why I ran in the beginning, but after being involved.
I didn't know it until the article came out in the paper that I was running, and I read it, and I was like, oh, I get paid for this if I win?
And that's not all sorts, but, like I said, for me, I, I feel like we're deserving, just like the fuss and fight for everyone else in this district to be treated fairly in this county. I don't feel like we should be any different.
Door's open for you.
So the next step, though, as a board, do we want the administration to put policy together? Because the next step, as I see it, is that we look at this as a policy update and it comes back to the board to be voted on as a policy update. So do we give administration direction to do that and bring it back to another meeting?
I think before we do that, I think we need to ask if anyone on the board is really interested in pursuing this. If so, then we need to.
It's kind of what I'm doing with policy update.
Add my two cents. I too didn't know that you got anything for doing this other than the satisfaction of making sure that our kids were being educated properly. And I have a, a, a big fear that when folks feel that they're going to make money and there's going to be fringe benefits, that they'll run for the wrong reasons and we'll have a bunch of people sitting up here who are sitting here because they want insurance or they want this or they want that. And that's, that's a huge concern for me. You know, I, I understand what you're saying, Jamie, and it would be very nice to be able to have the insurance that our employees have, because mine is not as good as theirs is anymore. It used to be, but it's not anymore. But I, I just, I just have a real concern about people running for the wrong reason.
And, and I thought about that, too. And if I saw a lot of people running for the board of supervisors' elections, I would agree, but I don't. I don't see that happening. There were two on, or, you know, that ran against, and my district seems to have the most, you know, opposition in both races. And I, but I did think about that, and that would be a concern. But like I said, I didn't, I see what the board of supervisors were making and, and their benefits, and, and I don't see a tremendous amount of people running for those offices.
Yeah, we're too small. If you want to be a fat cat, you run for Congress.
Yeah.
They're all fat cats.
I'll just say the grass is not always greener, let's move it that way.
So do, do we want the administration to bring this back as a policy update?
No.
Seeing people shake their heads, no?
I don't, I don't care.
Or, I don't care, I got one shaking their head, we?
I, I think we, I think we could at least hear what the policy update would be and where a suggested, you know, run the numbers, get the numbers and, and have a suggested place to budget that from. I mean, I think we need to hear that before we say yea or nay.
I mean, I would like it in the form of a policy update.
Yeah.
I'd like to bring it back as a policy update and we can go to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, we can vote on it then.
Vote on it and vote it down or vote it up.
Yes.
Well, I think Mr. King stated what the policy would probably be.
Yeah. He's not there, so I think we're just sort of spending more time.
I'm trying to be a little bit more formal about it, that's all I'm trying to do. This is just pure discussion right now.
But I'm trying to understand, does the policy, policy say you can or that?
That you may.
So it's already there?
No, he read it in the county.
That's the counties.
I, I just pulled some from other school districts who have already adopted it, and it just mirrors the language of the statute, which says board members may participate in the group health insurance program.
So that would be the extent of the policy?
Yes.
So it is optional in the sense?
Right.
It would amend the current policy by adding that statement.
Okay. So I think if we make a, a presentation of that policy change at the, at our next meeting or in a future meeting with the financial impact piece presented at the same time, then we can make a decision.
Okay. All right. You have your direction there, Mr.?
I have it, sir.
All right.
Thank you. And that ends my presentation for this.
Next item is unfinished business. School board members, do we have any unfinished business?
Yeah, what, um, what, what's going on with the doodle? Is that unfinished business?
That's another item, I think, I'm going to jump us in.
It's the next item underneath our capital planning meeting.
Gotcha.
Does anybody have any other unfinished business? If not, we'll move to the capital planning meeting. I finished the doodle poll, but I didn't see where we all agreed on the same date.
I mean, we have to just pick a date. I don't think we're going to agree on the same date.
Yeah, so we're back to where we were?
Well, if you want to pick a date where there's six people out of seven, you could do that.
Like the last time I saw, there were a couple of dates that were seven out of eight.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we included Brenda.
Okay. How'd you get that?
I can tell you what those dates.
There was four dates where there was six out of seven, seven, seven out of eight people. October 20th, 29th, October 9th, well, let me do, October 9th, October 16th, October 20th and October 29th. Seven of the eight people were available those four days.
Okay.
Is that right?
And I would assume that we need to pick the ones where Ms. Blackburn is definitely available. Did you, I'm pulling it up right now, but are, is she available in all of those?
So since I'm that seventh person, I need to confirm a couple of dates tomorrow, but I think the 20th will work, but I need to confirm that. October's just a very busy month.
Is it twen, what's a Monday?
It is a Monday.
Yeah, it's a Monday. But I just need to confirm, make sure.
That is a Monday, right? October the 20th?
That's correct. It's a Monday.
Will it totally say that's what it is?
Yeah, it would more likely be available that, that week.
You said you will?
Yeah, I should be.
What about the one of the 29th, just in case?
You, you'll be here the 20th, won't you?
Yeah, at this point, I've got, there's two birthdays that week I'll have to be in town for. Or I might get shipped out west permanently.
Okay, now, I want to be clear. I still need to check on that date.
So who, are you, will you let me know or some of us know real quick and we'll get it worded out?
Yes. So the, the 29th was another day?
And a.
That was a Wednesday.
So was it?
Yeah. Didn't matter the days, the date, yeah, okay. I'll double check, make sure, because there's some changes.
Okay. Any other items of unfinished business? New business by school board members?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Number one, this admissions policy, we need to look at that. We really need to take a close look at that.
Well, if you look under definitions, it has.
The admission policy and, and the enroll at MCPS, which was on a webpage, I haven't really looked at those, but do we need to take a close look at those to see if they're in sync with each other?
We're good, we're good.
Well, if you look on the, under definitions, number one, it explains about the age, so I think we're pretty in sync, unless I'm missing something.
Does it, does it state what the webpage was, what's on the webpage? Enroll at MCPS?
It says before September 30th.
It says on the webpage exactly what it says in policy. It says, they both are, maybe worded slightly different, but do we want, Dr. Graham, do you want to offer any insight to the board before we move forward with?
The state of Virginia does allow you to enroll a child who has not yet reached their birthday by September 30th. I've, I talked to the State Department and she said some, some systems do that, but most do not. You run into equity problems of a family that could pay tuition versus a family that couldn't and had a four-year-old. The other expenditure is where you, you have to test the child to see if they can come. In that situation, you, you need to purchase tests, have the staffing to do the testing, and historically, we just have not done that. I'm not sure what other questions you might have, but I've talked to principals that have been here and probably for the last 25 years, Montgomery County has not done it. I don't know past that. Parents can take advantage of private schools, they can homeschool. We do test children that come from private schools into the system. Usually, they're coming in as a first grader and we can use the end of the year tests from kindergarten for that. And children also have the opportunity, if you have an extremely bright child, that child can come to kindergarten after the, you know, at the correct age, at the age of five, and then we can refer them through the gifted program and accelerate, should that be needed, which is very rare, but occasionally, we do have, we do accelerate a child and let them jump a grade.
So if we have a parent who is willing to pay for the test, willing to pay for tuition, and they pass the test, they demonstrate that they have the cognitive ability to, to do the work, then would we let them in?
Probably this year we would not have, simply because the enrollment is so high and the board had given us direction not to bring tuition-based children unless they were children of an employee.
So some of the decision-making is based on enrollment numbers in our capacity and teacher ratio?
Correct.
Yes.
We haven't accepted any out-of-district students other than the students that, parents or teachers in the last two, three years.
Just, just a little history from when my kids were enrolling in school, which, a long time ago, and my son, it's October the 15th.
That's my son's birthday.
Okay, I understand. I believe in Montgomery County, it was based on the enrollment and how things were going up, because at one time, it was December that you could bring your child to school. And then it, they, over a period of years, rolled it back to September the 30th, because my son made it in by 15 days, because at that time, it was October 30th, and the next year, it was October 1st, you know, so. You know, so it's, enrollment was the big drive to do that. Now, if I'm a parent and I can't afford to have, to pay for the tuition, pay for the testing, but I have a very bright child, how fair would it be that someone else could and their child could and mine can't?
Well, and if I could piggyback having a, I mean, a third, a daughter, and talking to kindergarten teachers, from what I understand, that years and years ago when they did it, it wasn't only about the brightness of the child, but that they found, too, that a lot of four-year-olds just didn't have the motor skills at that point. They needed those extra developing months because they couldn't hold crayons, they couldn't hold pencils. And, and we all know what six months makes in a difference in a child, and so, you know, with speaking to preschool and kindergarten teachers, those were the things they were sharing as well as why they felt like it needed to be that backed-up date from years ago when it used to be December, so, just a comment.
Have you had this conversation with Mr. Edelman, is that correct?
We spoke on the phone.
Okay.
And it's also hard to decide, you know, you can take somebody's child with four days difference, but then somebody else might be short for a week, or the next person could be short a month. And then, you know, how you decide plus or minus how many days you have to open the door to let the students in. You know, my kid will be two months, you know, before September thirtieth, yours will be two days. Seems like two days could be as ready as, you know, October fourth could be as ready as September thirty. But in any other case, if I'm trying to come with a month difference, like you said, the social skills will make a huge difference. So then when you're going to say no, how you're going to say no will be an issue.
So they, they do it.
So the answer to this particular situation was there's no room?
That's, we just have not done this, but enrollment this year would have, would have prevented, even if we said that we did test children, enrollment this year, we would have probably said no. And the board decided several years ago not to take tuition students unless their, their parent worked in Montgomery County.
Exactly.
So board members, do we pursue this, or are we satisfied with the policy as read?
As far as the issue of being able to pay tuition, and, you know, if anything is reading like that in here, you know, to get your child in, we need to be consistent, I do agree where the language does say, you know, it has reached the age of five or before September thirtieth is consistent with the information that we were given tonight.
And I guess there could be a question, why then we have that maybe section on the admission number four? We probably did not need to have that section in the policy.
Well, here, here's my suggestion, I haven't really read through all this, and I'd like to. So I'd like to just do that and absorb what it says, and if I have a question or concern, I can bring it up at the next meeting as new business.
Okay, all right, it's good enough for me.
Good, yeah, good enough.
Other new business?
I just, real, real quickly, want to offer an apology for my statement during when we had to pay for the, pay the bills. Right as I was getting ready to say my statement, my conflict of interest, it deleted on my phone. So I remembered about four words of what I was supposed to say, so just wanted to offer my apologies. That's the reason I was stumbling, because I was looking at words that weren't there.
We got it. You're, you're good.
Two other things with new business, we heard a thing tonight about if you're not at, you don't show up the first day of school, you're removed from the role. Can you clarify that real quick?
That was my, my second.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not allowed, students aren't allowed to be enrolled in school until they report for day one. And so, and that means that their schedule, then they don't have access to the same classes that they would have had if they had been there on day one. So they are putting themselves at a disadvantage if they're looking to have a class at the high school that's full, they will have less of a chance of getting in than they would if they had been there on the first day.
And you notify the school and say you're going to be gone that day, it doesn't work that way?
Unfortunately, it doesn't. We can't enroll students until they physically are in a seat.
Is it a huge issue, I mean, and two questions, is it a big issue, and how widely is that known to parents that if you don't show up on the first day?
I'm not comfortable answering the second, I'd have to check on how widely known that is to parents. It's certainly a big deal to them if they don't have access to the courses that they want to take. So for anyone who can't get into a course, it's certainly very important to them to have that course. It depends very much on the school and the course, whether there are seats available in it or not, that varies widely.
Is it written then somewhere that you need to be at school the first day?
I'll have to check on that.
Yeah, that probably will be the important thing to have, if that's what, you know, we're doing, the parents should know at least. And under normal condition, you assume you'll be in the first day of school, I mean.
And something that we probably need to over-communicate.
I would think.
Yeah, because I mean, that's a pretty serious thing. Now, this apply, the policy applies across the board even to, to primary and elementary schools as well.
Student can't be enrolled.
It's, it's the high school where it becomes the biggest issue.
Sure. Yeah, you still are having, the chances are likely that you'll still have the same teacher in elementary school, but at high school, I guess, those classes, you all know that have students fill up very quickly and change often in that first week.
Instead, it's a, you know, take it granted kind of, I mean, you, you assume that you'll be in the first day of school, but there will be, I guess, extenuating circumstances that they may have to miss it. So I guess they have to really know the consequences, you know, but.
Legally, you're supposed to show up.
Yeah. I mean, I never thought about.
Legally, you're supposed to be there on the first day, I would encourage you.
Right. I'll have to check on how we communicate that and what's in writing to the parents.
Yeah, that's the probably message.
Absolutely.
Uh, and then we heard a presentation on PE every day?
Yes.
Did you, I was, I'd like more information on that?
Yes.
The two young ladies did a great job presenting.
Absolutely.
Would like to hear what more we can do about PE every day.
Yeah, because we've talked about that a lot in the years I've been here, and especially when the scheduling change at the middle school.
We went down when, I think.
Yeah, so.
PE is required through what grade, is it ninth or tenth?
Tenth.
Ninth and tenth it's required, junior year is when it's.
Right.
Okay.
But I'd also like to know what's going on as far as recesses, you know, at the elementary level. How much are these kids being able to get out and run and move?
Oh, hey, excuse me. Any other items of new business? You see one item there under the, um, item B, and we put the Virginia School Board Association Conference and the NSB Conference for next year on the agenda so that you can start planning and let Brenda, Ms. Drake, know that you will be attending those meetings?
Yes, these were added, you asked that in the future when board members would be traveling, that we added that to the agenda for discussion. So we put it here for tonight. I did a approximate cost, if you want that information, or I can hold it for.
No, that would be great if you have it up to do a approximate.
The V S B A conference, the registration fee for that is about three hundred dollars, and the cost at the hotel per night is a hundred and forty-four dollars. So we're looking about five hundred and eighty-eight dollars per board member, and then mileage and meals on top of that. The NSBA conference is significantly more expensive, they haven't.
It's part of it.
Yes, it's in Nashville this year, they haven't opened up registration, but best, based on last year's data, the registration fee is around seven hundred and twenty-five dollars a night. The hotels usually are right around two hundred dollars a night, and then we pay for your flight there. Last year, the cost per person was right around fifteen hundred dollars per person.
We typically only have one person that we send to that, is that my understanding?
There are.
It, it depends.
It depends?
It depends.
It depends on people's schedules, we've got as many as four or five goes.
Oh, okay. Well, we have one who actually rep, is a representative of us, right next, Mr. Ivors for this year, okay.
Okay.
Well, I guess the other, my question will be, how are we gonna, obviously we have limited funds, how are we gonna decide how many of us should go, or any, if one wants to pay their way or part of it, you know, how are we gonna handle that? Like if we all say we want to go, the, let's say the.
We went over budget last year, so we are trying not to do that.
Probably have to figure out how many are going first, how many want to go first.
Yeah, I think what, what I would encourage you to do is let Ms. Drake know that expressing interest in wanting to go.
And then we'll make a decision.
She will come back to the board and say this number of people, and here's what the cost is going to be, and then we'll say yes or no.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was.
That's how I would approach it.
Sounds good.
Yeah, but, I, I would highly encourage, I think it, to me, it's very important, because in all the ones I've been to, it's obvious that there are a lot of boards that see that as an opportunity for their board to get together and do some activities outside of the boardroom together as a board, especially at the national convention. I mean, you see a lot of boards there together. Okay, at these national conventions.
Plus, plus it's a great learning.
Yeah, my first experience was wonderful.
That's the, that's the main point.
Seminars, seminars are phenomenal.
The music at the national convention is wonderful, too. They do a wonderful job with the music. Okay, any other new business? Announcements and information. Hearing none, agenda prep, and you see the next coming, upcoming school board meetings. And with that, I seek a motion for adjournment.
Salute.
Second.
All those in paper signify as seen aye.
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you all, safe travels home, everyone.